Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, January 5th, 2022 formal meeting of Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For attendance, I see Hench, Craig, Townsend, Signs, with Martin on the telephone. That's who we have present, so we have a quorum. So we'll go to item number three, public discussion of any item not on the agenda. I don't see any public in the audience, and I don't believe anybody else is calling in, but I'll ask if there's any public comment anyway for an item not on the agenda. Second call. Seeing none, we'll go on to item number four, which is case number REZ21-0010. Location, 421 East Market Street. This is an application for a rezoning of approximately 0.13 acres of land from commercial office CO1 to mixed-use MU. And Phoebe, if you ever can't hear us, will you just speak up? Because we want to make sure you can hear us.
Well, I'm following along on the agenda, but thank you.
All right. And Ray?
Thank you, Chair. Ray Heitner, Neighborhood and Development Services. Here is an aerial view of 421 East Market Street with the subject property outlined there in the white dash. And here is a view of the zoning. The current zoning is a little bit muted on this view, but it's kind of a lighter pink shade for CO1 commercial office. That sort of lighter purple shade that you see to the west and south is mixed use, so there is mixed-use zoning adjacent to the subject property. Here's a view of the existing structure on the subject property. This is looking southwest. You can see a two-story structure. The request to rezone to mixed use is being done so to provide a little bit more flexibility from the applicant's perspective to either continue to rent the ground floor of the existing building as a commercial use or possibly convert the structure to single-family use or have two different apartments, one on each floor. It's our understanding right now that the office space on the ground floor has been vacant for some time. So an overview of the zoning. CO1 commercial office generally supports office-related uses and is intended to serve as a buffer between residential zones and intensive commercial or industrial areas. One distinction within the CO zone is that multifamily residential dwelling units have to be located above street level. So the existing zoning would not allow multifamily residential dwelling units on both floors of the building. The proposed zoning for mixed use is intended to provide a transition between commercial and employment centers to less-intensive residential zones. Mixed-use zone allows kind of a variety of uses, which I'll go over in more detail in just a second, but allows for a mix of residential and commercial uses. This is a table that was included in the staff report. It shows kind of a rundown of uses that are allowed in the CO1 and mixed-use zones. This is kind of just a snapshot of the differences between the two zones. So in the mixed-use column on the right, you can see that there's kind of more of a variety of residential zones that are either permitted by right or provisionally. You know, in this instance, where in all likelihood the existing structure will be preserved, you would be looking at either a detached, single-family use permitted by right or duplex use provisional use, which would have to abide by some additional criteria that's required for duplexes within the Central Planning District. The rezoning would remove a few commercial uses that are currently applicable to the CO1 zone, animal-related commercial, indoor, commercial recreational use, hospital facilities as a provisional use are some of those uses. Generally speaking, it would probably be difficult to facilitate a lot of those uses on the existing framework of the lot as it stands with a 40-foot width. Not saying it's impossible, but it would be challenging. So more than likely, what you would ultimately see, you know, with the existing structure and the existing lot layout would be something either residential or office-commercial kind of in nature. For the rezoning review criteria, staff uses two different criteria points in review of its rezonings. One, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and two, compatibility with the existing neighborhood character. And with respect to consistency with the comprehensive plan, subject property is designated for office commercial use in the Central District Plan. As I mentioned before, rezoning to a mixed-use zone would allow for some flexibility to permit a mix of office and residential use and/or that single-family residential or kind of apartments on either floor. There is a point within the Central District Plan that encourages kind of reinvestment of the area's older housing stock. So staff looks at this as, you know, by permitting a mixed-use zone in this location, it does present more options for residential use viability going forward. Here's a look at that Central District Plan map. You might be able to see here, I've circled in kind of that teal color where the existing property is located. You know, the pink shading is for office commercial, as it's termed here in the Central District Plan. Again, right adjacent to that diagonal hatching, which indicates preferred mixed use for the Central District Plan. So with respect to compatibility with the existing neighborhood, you know, as I mentioned before, there is mixed-use zoning directly west and south of the subject property. And I'm going to show you here in a little bit a few examples of some of the housing types that are adjacent to the subject property that are in line with the existing structure. This is a map that just kind of zooms out the existing zoning a little bit more and shows you sort of the extent of where that mixed-use zone is located, primarily south and west of the subject property, a little bit to the southeast as well, sort of straddling Jefferson Street there. Here's a look west, south of the subject property. Again, this kind of just gives you a feel for, I guess, the aesthetic character of the surrounding area. You can see there's a few structures that are sort of similar in scale and ultimately used to the existing structure. There's sort of a, I guess, mid-century apartment building kind of sandwiched between these structures. Here's a look east. Again, a couple more like-minded structures. This is looking east on the north side of the property, so you have a view of the front facade here. And then this is looking north from the south end of the property, just to give you another visual here. This is the structure in green again being the existing structure on the subject property. So in terms of next steps, upon recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing would be considered for, would be scheduled for consideration by the city council. Staff is recommending approval of REZ21-0010, a proposal to rezone approximately 0.13 acres of land located at 421 East Market Street from commercial use, CO1, to mixed use. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ray. Is there any members of, are there any members of the commission who have a question for Ray on this particular application?
I have a question. You know, this really is the buffer between the commercial just to the west down there. I mean, that next west block has two five-story buildings on it. What's the height that you are allowed to go in mixed use?
I think it's 35. I believe it's 35 feet.
So that's three stories.
Roughly, yeah.
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 Okay. I mean, just when you look at, and suddenly it's becoming what the bigger square next to it is, that if someone owned both of those pieces.
Sure.
They could redevelop it, but to a maximum height of three stories, is what you're saying.
Right, yeah.
Okay. That was my question.
Any further questions for Ray on this?
No.
All right. Thank you, Phoebe. Seeing there's no questions by staff, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any members of the public that would like to address the commission on this Second call. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Signs, almost changed your name. Second by Townsend.
Seems pretty straightforward. It looks like an appropriate conversion there.
I agree.
So do I. I mean, in the sense that it does allow it to stay as a viable rental option in an older unit. I just, thinking down the road, when I asked my question previously about what could end up being there.
Yeah.
But I'm absolutely supporting it.
And I am hopeful that they rehabilitate the structure because it's, there's some nice houses there. They all have been cut up for apartments, but, you know, we can hope. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Phoebe, are you aye?
Aye.
Anyone in opposition?
Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, that is approved five to zero. Item number five, consideration of good neighbor policy. Ann?
Thank you, Chair. Ann Russell with Neighborhood and Development Services. As the Chair mentioned, this item is related to a proposed good neighbor policy. As you may recall, the commission had several discussions related to the city's current good neighbor program in 2019 and 2020. And in 2020, the commission recommended that the city require good neighbor meetings for certain types of land development applications, and the city council concurred with that recommendation. So in response to the direction provided by the commission and the city council, the staff has drafted a good neighbor policy, which was included in your packet. Although the city has had a good neighbor program for many years, no formal policy has ever been adopted outlining our expectations. Therefore, staff has proposed a formal policy that would be adopted by the city council. Staff has proposed a policy as opposed to an amendment to our zoning code. And unlike an amendment to the code, a policy does not legally require good neighbor meetings, so it would not be mandatory. However, our approach has been to formalize our current expectations through the adoption of a policy. Although most applicants are very willing to hold a good neighbor meeting as part of the process, it is, in an unlikely event that an applicant refuses to hold a meeting, we would not be able to penalize them based on what we're proposing as a policy. At this point, staff is still working out some issues with the city attorney's office and working with them to revise the draft policy in the form that it is tonight. So at this point, we are recommending that the commission defer this item to January 19th, so we can work through those issues with the city attorney's office. With that said, we would like your input on our approach. As I mentioned, we are proposing a policy which would not legally require good neighbor meetings, but instead formalize our expectations through a resolution. So I would like the commission's input on if that approach makes sense to you or if you would like us to pursue a code amendment, which would legally require the meetings.
I have two thoughts. One, I agree with the policy because it gets more flexibility and things can be changed more quickly if they need be. And I know since it's just a policy, we can't, no one can be forced to do it, but all I had to ask if this is approved is that we be notified if the people refuse to do it, because I certainly would want that piece of information as I'm considering the application. I am very thankful that this is being followed up on, because if there's one consistent thing we've heard through the years, it's that nobody told me about this.
Nobody told me.
And so at least this way, we're being responsive, and, you know, if people don't know after this, then I guess now it's on them. So I really appreciate you doing this, and I'm fine with the policy.
How often do they decline to have a good neighbor policy when we request it?
In my tenure, which has been, what, not even four years? Every time I've asked an applicant to hold a meeting, they've held the meeting.
So it's not that it happens often?
No. In my experience, it has not happened where they have refused.
And if it does, if we're notified, we can ask the question when they're here?
Yeah, but I guess Sarah would probably say you can't really use that in the consideration of the application.
I'm not saying we'd use it in the consideration, but it certainly informs our opinion on the willingness of an applicant to be concerned for the, to be interested in the concerns of their neighbors.
Exactly.
That's my issue. I mean, I agree with everything you said, Mike. I just don't, I mean, what authority, power, whatever, does the commission have then, if it's not part of the code, it's just a policy, to say, "We have some questions about this, and we think the neighbors probably have some questions too," and you go back and do this and have a, can we say you have to have a good neighbor policy if you want to come back and present something to us or not?
Probably not. I think at that point, you know, as you guys have done, is my mic on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go a little closer.
I think the natural consequence of failing to have that kind of good neighbor meeting is that the application is delayed. It takes longer, more people come to the P&amp;Z meetings, more people come to council, raise objections. It just delays it as a natural consequence. But I think, especially in the context of a rezoning, where there are public hearings, you know, the property owner's rights are a little bit more, you know, they have more rights. And so for us to, you know, deny an application because they failed to hold a good neighbor meeting, I think could potentially subject us to claims that the decision is arbitrary and capricious. You know, whether they held a good neighbor meeting doesn't have anything to do necessarily with whether the application complies with the comprehensive plan, you know? And that's really what the state has told the cities, that needs to be the basis for your consideration. So I think there are, you know, there's the public pressure piece of you guys saying, "Did you hold that good neighbor meeting?" That's certainly a public relations problem for them, and it delays their application, but...
And it would, I assume, likely be a public relations problem for them when they got to the council level.
Yeah, right, right. So I think that there are ways to gain compliance without being so draconian as to say, you know, "We're going to deny it because you breached an ordinance," or, you know, "You failed to satisfy this ordinance requirement." So it makes sense to me that it be a policy as well, but the current draft, I think, is, that's not clear in the current draft.
So Section 4, Failure to Comply. Failure to comply with this policy shall delay the public meeting in which an application may be considered. Why? What's that level of?
Yeah, right. And that's the stuff that we're still working on revising, which is why Ann says to defer this item.
Very good.
Okay.
Sorry, is there more commission discussion?
I had, also had a comment. Could you put the proposed policy up here?
Yeah.
Somewhere in here, it says, oh, in Section 3A, that last sentence, "Because staff may attend good neighbor meetings as a resource person," when do you, and when do you not attend? I just, I guess I thought that you probably went to all good neighbor meetings, so that must not be true from the way this is worded. So when would you not attend a good neighbor meeting?
We always attend the good neighbor meetings. I don't think there's ever been a situation in which we hadn't.
I mean, you could imagine they might have one without telling us, you know, something like that.
And I mean, and I'm just thinking about this time we're living in, if we are really short-staffed and no one's available. I mean, I think that's an extreme situation, but I suppose it's possible.
I just think that could be reworded a little bit, as long as you're working on it, to make it still not 100% every time, but a little stronger than what it says. Because staff may attend, I mean, feel, I don't know, something better than that is, would be a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Does it have to be an in-person good neighbor meeting, or could it just be virtual?
It could be virtual.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that option is there. See, I just don't feel like this is onerous on the applicant at all, and especially if there's an option for a virtual meeting. You know, visiting with your neighbors should never be a burden, in my opinion, and I really want people to do it.
I'm less gung-ho about the whole virtual thing.
Oh, I'm not, I love in-person meetings. I think it's much more collaborative and effective, but there may be times where virtual gets you a better attendance. So I'd like the option to be there. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I mean, I think in this day and age right now, that's got to be an option. Otherwise, you may not be able to have a meeting.
It's not required by law to be an open meeting, you know? It's not a public meeting, open meeting requirement.
I just want to give the applicant the opportunity to do that, because there's some times where there isn't a location within reasonable distance of that, the rezoning area, that's, makes sense to have a meeting, and it ends up being remote from there. I don't know, I just kind of like the look.
Even if the applicant is out of town and wants to have the meeting.
Yeah.
And I would, honestly, I would probably assume if given the option and if it wasn't a situation where, you know, that health and safety were an issue, most of them are probably going to choose to be in person, because this telecommuting stuff is a pain to deal with, you know, especially on a temporary basis if you're not set up for it.
Yeah. Hey, Phoebe, do you have any comments about this policy for staff?
I like the talk about Zoom, especially because this pandemic is not going away, and I want, I would want people, everyone to feel included in that. But no, so far I like what I'm hearing.
All right, thank you.
Do we want to, so do we want to, do we need to say maybe to be held in person or virtually? I mean, or does in-person suggest that that's acceptable?
We can, we can clarify that in the policy.
Yeah, I don't think it would hurt.
Are you going to open this for public input tonight?
Yeah, I was just gonna say. I just wanted to mention that we did receive one piece of correspondence.
Got it right here. I just want to finish our discussion, then you must be Pam, and then we'll invite Pam to come up and comment. Any other discussion for staff from the commissioners? Pam, you want to come up and talk? Please just state your name for the record, and if you'd limit your comments to five minutes or less, please.
Yeah, if you could sign in, too. Okay. So I live two blocks from here on College Green Park, and I've seen a lot of things that were not subject to good neighbor policy meetings that really steamrolled over the comprehensive plan. So I'll try to be brief. You have the letter in front of you with the extensive development, but right in town, if you remember, if you were in Iowa City a few years ago, three Civil War cottages were taken down for a huge development on South Dubuque Street. Those three cottages were indicated in the comprehensive plan to be preserved, and yet the developer did not have the review that you would expect, and it was steamrolled through, they were demolished, and there went part of history. I have a bias for historic preservation, but still, they were indicated in the comprehensive plan, and there wasn't the review and the respect given to the comprehensive plan. So I think the idea that we always have good neighbor meetings is fallacious. And sometimes I've been at planning and zoning meetings where people have gone before you, before they purchased. They are not owners, but before they purchase a property for demolition or other development, they see if it is going to be approved. So then they have no ownership rights at that point. So to say that we can't step on owners' toes does not apply in all situations. So I think that that needs to be addressed in review process. That's not in the proposal right now. The other thing I had concerns about was within the city limits. Is this just within the city limits, or is it also applicable for annexing adjacent properties to Iowa City?
It does apply to annexations.
It does? Yeah, that's what I thought.
It does what?
It does apply to annexations.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think...
Pam, just to let you know, we can't respond to you, we can only listen to you.
Sure, sure. I understand. So, and in that case, you know, annexations are by definition a large property with many housing units or at least many acres. So I think that the radius should be expanded to possibly two miles, notifying owners that their bus, student bus routes and taxation could be affected by this development, new schools could be built. So that would be for that situation. Also, in town, it doesn't work to notify rooming houses that there's going to be something done. The notifications should also go to the landlords who own that property. It is just possible that they want to retain the historic neighborhood and not have a huge building added there, which has happened within 500 feet of my house. And, you know, that was not respected. That was a zoning change, and it was a TIF, too. The Chauncey was added adjacent to a historic preservation district. And that zoning went from CB5 to CB10, which included 15 stories. So that was a huge breach over Gilbert Street. So thank you for your attention, and I hope that some of my ideas make sense to you.
Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no other members of the public, it's not a public hearing anyway, but just receiving input, that'll end the public input session. Any further discussion amongst commission members? Can there be a motion to defer this item?
So moved.
Second. So we got a motion by Craig, second by Signs to defer this to, is it to a particular date or until represented by staff?
January 19th.
So we'll defer to January 19th? Discussion? So we'll defer to January 19th? Discussion?
Do you want to defer to your next meeting? Do you already know? I just.
Differ to the next.
Don't necessarily want to have, you guys have to have a meeting just for one item if there's not other items.
Grandly Amendment, would you like to amend your motion to our next regularly-scheduled formal meeting?
It was my motion.
Oh, your motion, sorry.
Yes, I am happy to make that change.
Very good, thank you.
To the next meeting.
So as amended, discussion?
I did have a question. I believe that one of the changes in the policy is that we would be notifying property owners, not just the tenants, if it was a rental property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so I think that does address one of the concerns that was mentioned earlier.
Further discussion? All those in favor of deferral signify by saying aye.
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 Phoebe, are you?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the deferral is approved 5 to 0. Next item on the agenda is item number six, discussion of commission roles and responsibilities.
I'd like to request deferral of that item.
Well, I'd actually like to have a conversation about that.
Okay.
Because the, and what, can I tell you why?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
This is in reference to Commissioner Pedrone sent a correspondence to the city council and asked the city council, and first off, she said that she opposed the rezone, the rezoning for, let me get this number right here, for case number REZ 21-0009, which passed by the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission on November 4th, 7 to 0. This was the application to rezone approximately 5.81 acres of land from high-density, single-family residential with a planned development overlay. And that was fine for her to change her mind. It is, it didn't have any weight, because the vote had already been made. But then on, the tone of the letter, that was that on behalf, she is requesting the council meet with the commission regarding this application. And I thought it was inappropriate for a singular commission member to make a request of the council without the council voting on that or reaching consensus on that. I just don't think an individual.
You mean the commission?
The commission.
Commission. I don't think it's appropriate for a commission member to send a correspondence purporting to speak on behalf of the commission. They're certainly more than welcome to speak as an individual citizen that happens to be a commission member. And so I just wanted to have that discussion that, that is not our expectation. Our expectation is that someone speaking on our behalf, they do it with the commission's consent and collective weight behind that. Mark, you saw the correspondence, do you have any comments about that?
No, I would agree. I think that we just, you know, need some clarification that, first of all, once the commission has a vote, that's the vote of record, and, and also that we speak as a commission or we speak as an individual, but not mixing the two.
Right, I totally agree. And, you know, she's a very new member. It's, this is a hard commission to learn how it works. But I think that is pretty standing operating procedure for any board of commission in the city. So, yes.
I agree.
I'm not upset with Commissioner Pedrone at all. I'm sure she had good intentions, just naivete. And I just thought we need to speak that, since the letter did in fact go to the council, and so it's public record, that we need to publicly discuss it. And it'll be in our minutes now. And the reason I asked Mark first, as Vice Chair, he received a correspondence also, and so I just, that's, I didn't want anyone to think I spent some.
Well, I saw it in the council packet, and I just thought, she just doesn't know.
Yeah, but I just felt we need to discuss it.
Hey, Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
It, oh, is Maria in attendance tonight?
No, she's, was unable to attend tonight.
Okay. When the letter was sent, did Sarah or anybody reach out to her, do you know?
This is Ann. I, I let her know that this item on the agenda tonight was in response to those letters, but we pass those along to city council like we normally would.
Got it, okay.
All right. One of the related things that, and I think maybe would be helpful, I think Commissioner Pedrone often waits till the very end of a discussion and maybe feels like she hasn't had her voice heard. And, and I would, was hoping she'd be here, because I wanted to personally encourage her to, to participate more fully in the discussion as we, as we, as we debate these issues. It seems like many times, it's like you're calling for a vote, and she wants to continue a discussion. And, and so I think we want to encourage full participation throughout the entire discussion, so that, you know, everyone's opinions are heard, and everyone has a chance to, you know, express their concerns and weigh in on that.
Any further discussion or comments?
My concern is that we're having this discussion, and she's not here. So what good does it do to have this discussion if she doesn't?
Well, it was already on the agenda, so I wanted to have it, since it is part of public record, and it'll be in the minutes, and we can certainly just have a sidebar conversation.
Could we put it on the next agenda?
Well.
So I do, I do agree with Billy that, you know, that Maria's not here, and not that, I would never want this to be like a bully session at all, but I also, I think that it, in my opinion, it's fine to, it's on the agenda, and let's put it out there, but I don't know that, I don't, I'm not comfortable having discussion around it, since she's not there. Just putting it out there, I get, but I feel like, I feel like we should be careful.
Well, I, I'm comfortable with the conversation, because I don't think it's critical of somebody as a person taking an action. It was just simply as a role, an action that's outside the expectations of the commission, and so the commission needs to have that discussion. And it was on the agenda.
So the protocol, the protocol of it all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fair enough.
And I feel like the protocol would not call for putting it back on the agenda. I mean, we've had the conversation, she can read the minutes, Mike can talk to her in person if, if he feels that that's good, or a staff member can. But to me, putting it back on the agenda is like, you know, we want to shake our finger at you in public. I mean. I guess I just want to make sure that.
Right, right. Yeah, I totally get that.
I just want to make sure that she knows the concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
So if that means that, Mike, you contacted her and talked to her about it, but it doesn't do any good to, for us to discuss it if she doesn't.
Right.
Understand why.
Any further discussion? Okay, item number eight, planning and zoning information. Ann, do you have anything?
Happened to seven.
Uh, seven, consider, I, I'm just anxious to go home. Item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes for November 4, 2021. Are there any major corrections or additions that anybody, any commission member would like to make to those minutes?
I move approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion by Sines, second by Townsend. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, including Martin. And those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the minutes are approved 5 to 0. Now, number eight, planning and zoning information. Thank you. Ann?
Just a few items. Couple of city council-related applications. The IWV, Slothower Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the annexation were approved by the city council. So the annexation is going to the State Review Board later this month. The Coles rezoning, I think, I maybe already mentioned this, that the manufactured housing park, that also was approved by the city council last couple of months ago, maybe it was December. But the most important announcement I have is that tonight is Ray's last meeting.
No.
Ray has taken a job with the City of Joliet, so I wanted to take this opportunity to thank him for his past three and a half years.
Were we too rough on you, Ray?
Ray, congratulations.
The temperature out there, I can see why, why he wants to go south.
He wants to move south, even if it's just 100 miles.
The Joliet?
The Joliet. It might be like, a little bit south.
Yeah.
All right. And I have something I'd like to bring up to everybody. As you know, we've moved our planning and zoning formal meetings to 6:00 PM on Wednesdays. Is there any interest at all of moving it to 5:30 PM? I mean, we've had some really marathon meetings of late, and the city council has moved their work sessions up to 4:00 PM. And I, I don't know if there's a sweet spot that works best for everybody's schedule, but, you know, I'd sure like to get home before 11 o'clock sometime, so.
As much as I was like it, honestly, it probably would be challenging for me fairly frequently to, to be here by 5:30. 6 o'clock is no problem, and I'm very happy we moved it to 6:00. But I would be a little.
I could do either way. It doesn't matter to me. I like the earlier time, but either way is better.
I definitely like the earlier time.
Phoebe, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I have to, like, right now, it works because that could work, because I have to get my son to dance. We, we leave at 6:00 to get him to dance, so like today, fine, my husband took him. But I, yeah, it, no, I think it should be fine. Oh, wait, 5:30, earlier. No, I don't know, whatever. Do whatever you want, and I'll figure it out.
Well, if everybody just think about that, we, we're missing a couple of commission members, so I certainly want them to weigh in on it. So I'll just bring it up next time also. So just think about it, if you would.
Sure.
Any other things that someone would like, any commission member would like to address under item number eight?
I do, and, and I, I think this is the appropriate place to, to address it. Can we have a conversation about the, I think it's the riverfront crossing code, with the requirement of, of street-side windows that show, that go to nothing? The new, the new, the new come-and-go building on, on the South Gilbert reminds me that it seems like a silly rule when you just have a wall, two walls full of windows that look at a white wall.
Well, and the one on the corner of.
Over Towncrest.
Over by, yeah, in the Towncrest neighborhood. Every time I drive by that, I go, what is that for?
It's the same on the Benton Street in Riverside.
I mean, it, it, I don't see that it's enhancing anything, quite frankly, from a visual standpoint. And it's adding, I mean, honestly, the come-and-go on South Gilbert, they've got several hundred square feet of empty space in what's a very, very expensive piece of real estate. And, you know, and are we putting a, are we putting an extra burden on builders and developers and property owners with that requirement? I just.
Well, it must not just be riverfront crossings, because the Towncrest neighborhood is not riverfront crossings.
But they have a similar zoning, I think. So.
I don't know. I'm, I'm completely Switzerland on it. I feel like, in that particular circumstance, I agree with you, but in general, I want street windows. So certainly there's some exceptions, but.
But what does the window do for you?
Oh, I don't know that does anything in that particular situation.
We need to see something inside other than a blank wall.
Yeah, because I just would hate to see just a solid brick wall.
Oh, I agree.
You know, so this is to be something we'd have to really think through the ramifications of it, because you don't want street-level, solid brick walls.
No. And, yeah, so I mean, I think we could look at, we could look at architectural alternatives. Even like in those cases, even a frosted glass, to me, would be a, a middle ground where they wouldn't have to waste the space inside it, but it would still give you a visual interest on the outside.
So I thought that part of the, the purpose for those windows, for being, for street-level windows, was for safety, which, when you have those lit-up windows that go nowhere, and nobody can see anything, I don't see how that is helpful. You know, whatever the situation may be, if it's a woman walking alone at night, or, you know, something more nefarious than that.
So I think we're getting on the point where we're starting to do some debating and discussion, so we probably should stop. But is this something, I guess, looking at Sarah, should we, if we want to have more discussion on this, should it be an agenda item?
Yeah, I think, yes. I mean, the commission can propose amendments to the zoning code, you know, at your own initiation. So if there is a majority of the commission that wants to discuss it further, it's something that you could put on the agenda more formally. Or you could suggest staff, you know, consider this issue and, you know.
Is it, is it a staff discretion item, or is it a code issue?
I think it's a code issue.
I think so, too.
Yeah. I, I see your point. I don't know if I'm interested in putting it on an agenda, because I don't know that, now's a good time with Ray leaving of, of asking staff to do another thing. Maybe we could discuss it in the future when there's additional staff, and then we could get, have an agenda item, just sort of discuss the ramifications of this.
I could, I could live with that, yeah. I would like.
I would like to see it as a pending issue.
Yeah, I would like to have the discussion.
I know we don't have a pending.
It can't possibly be what people thought it was going to be.
I know we don't have a pending issues list, but if we ask Sarah, I mean, Ann, to add it to her pending issues list for.
I bet they have a pending.
Sometime in the future. Can we put that on a, sometime in the future, let's have a discussion about that when you have, when you have some more staff.
You let me know when you're ready, and I'll bring it up again.
And then, quick question. Is it, I'm not familiar with the one you're talking about. I drive by the one in Towncrest all the time. Is it the same corporate entity that owns both of those buildings?
Yeah, it's the come-and-go on.
They're building all of them.
South Gilbert and Highland.
The plan, the plan, the current store plan is the same every place they're building.
Right, so in Iowa City, they just have to put a glass wall in.
Correct.
And a brick wall.
Yep.
Six feet further in.
Yep.
All right, any other further planning and zoning information items?
You caught me right as the school district announced they canceled school tomorrow. So I was just getting the text when you asked me that question.
Oh, no.
Sorry, I was distracted for a second there.
Well, my wife's a teacher and will be thrilled at that news. So.
My kids were expecting it today, and then they told me I was a liar.
Is that because of cold?
Yeah, right. Like, we need to help explain what lying means.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't think anything bad. I just thought you're formulating a response. So it's very convincing the way your face looks. So item number nine for adjournment, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend is their second.
Second.
Second by Craig, discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor for adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5 to 0. Thank you, everybody.